When it's in half a day, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning is calling this virtual public hearing to order. It is now 2:01 PM on Wednesday, November 24th, 2021. Notice that this afternoon's virtual hearing was provided via email to senators, stakeholders in the local media on November 17th for the five-day notice and November 22nd for the 48-hour notice thus meeting the requirements of open government law. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined us here today, Senator Joanne Brown and Senator Telo Taitegui. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the executive appointment of Mr. Jose Umanios to serve as a member of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board, as well as to hear testimony on the executive appointment of Ms. Rosalina M. Siniklas to serve as a member of the Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Northern Guam. So the rules of conduct are as follows: The host of the hearing will mute all participants until called upon by the chair. Virtual backgrounds are not permitted, and participants' face must be visible at all times. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking into your microphone. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. Order of questioning will begin with the chairperson followed by my colleagues. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. And now to begin our agenda. The Northern Soil and Water Conservation District is one of two conservation districts on Guam, the other is a southern. It was established to work in partnership with the University of Guam and in cooperation with the government of Guam, entities overseeing local and federal programs, established to promote conservation, the development and use of soil and water resources on Guam, in order to control and prevent soil erosion and flooding and to improve agriculture water management. The powers of the board include some of the following: To provide for and encourage surveys, investigations and research relating to soil and water conservation; and to publish and disseminate information concerning such subjects; To provide for and encourage demonstrations relative to the control and prevention of erosion; and the conservation of soil and water resources; To review conservation plans prepared by farmland owners, which are precondition for a contract between the farmland owners and the US Secretary of Agriculture. So now I would like to start with the first item of our agenda is to hear testimony for the executive appointment of Mr. Jose Antalan Manios to serve as a member of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District. I would like to now invite a board member from the Northern Soil and Water Conservation District, Katrina Rages, to provide her testimony. Welcome Katrina.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. I am Katrina Rages. I am the Board Secretary and Treasurer of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District. I am here to attend the public hearing as our board was not previously made aware of any potential candidates, but I'd like to take this opportunity to know our candidates. I just got an interruption there with a call, so, but I'd like to take this opportunity to get to know who our candidates are and of course introduce myself. I'd like to say good luck to the candidates and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
You, Ms. Rages, we did send out the notices, so I would have to go back and check. We did send it out to all the members, so we'll make sure that, double-check that. Okay, thank you for being here and for participating. Now I'd like to invite Pope Cristobal, who is also a member of the Northern Soil and Water Conservation District Board, to provide any testimony on regards to the nomination for Jose Manios.
Seduzmasi, Senator Sabina Flores Perez. Let me just begin that my legislative testimony today is in support of the confirmation of Ms. Rosalina M. Siniklas of Jigo and Mr. Jose Antalan Manios of Dedidil to the Northern Soil and Water Conservation District Board. Honorable Senadora Sabina Flores Perez of the Soil and Water Conservation District's Oversight Committee, Honorable Senadora Joanne Brown, who she and I, 25 years ago, authored a law that we're still reminiscing as of this morning. Honorable, Honorable Senadora Telo Taitegui, I appreciate your presence today here. I'm going to start this, and seduzmasi for the opportunity to provide supportive testimony for these two farmer, rancher, who have been nominated by Governor Lourdes Aiyong Guerrero to fill the two existing vacancies on the Northern Soil and Water Conservation District Board that occurred in Jan-, July. As you may know through their respective resumes, both individuals are seasoned, long-serving professionals, who are also certified as bona fide farmers under the Department of Agriculture's Bonafide Farmers Registry. There were three northern farmers who had openly expressed their deep interest in the work of the board explicitly outlined under 5GCA Chapter 17, which recognizes the power and the authority of Magahoga of Guam to appoint and fill vacancies within the board. These two, a farmer and a rancher garnered the governor's nomination. I am grateful to Magahoga Lurong Guerrero for recognizing the untenable situation of a so-called quorum board that has often found itself rendering perfunctory level service in advancing its mandate. Recently, without the requisite second signature to her earned salary, her paycheck of over four weeks, our most competent and capable staff resigned. One board member won't sign, and the other questioned the time sheet format, the number of hours worked, and wondered what the contract stated. The delay and frustration after the board chair had already approved the payroll as submitted caused the resignation. Today, the board is left without. The power of a quorum board can be unhealthy and detrimental to achieving mandated goals. Recently, one board member took it upon himself to cancel the board meeting without informing the chair. The appointments by the governor that are in front of you completes the five-board membership and sets the board on a path less apt for such actions. I believe without any negative connotations that having a full board through your respective confirmations will assuage any potentially outrageous situation that a quorum board may find itself. Perhaps at another time, the legislature may want to reexamine the makeup and composition of a government board of only five farmers or ranchers that are triannually elected at large. I believe that the potential for growth and expansion of such a board, whether through increase in number or through restructuring, may be timely and necessary considering a more sustainable and food purity agenda in the near future. I strongly approve and I applaud the desire and willingness of these two professionals to render community service a steward of soil and water conservation. The work and commitment found in 5GCA Chapter 71 demand proper attention and adherence in a professional manner. In phone conversation with these two, I get the sense that they are forward-thinking and are drivers of good ideas and programs. They have studied the mandate and are anxious to begin with positive outlook and energy. The farmers and ranchers can only hope to gain from board members such as Ms. Rosalinas Siniklas and Mr. Jose Manios. Please confirm their respective nominations. Seduzmasi.
Seduzmasi, Board Member Pope Cristobal for that testimony. This is part of both nominations. I'd like to now recognize Vince Manios for his testimony for Jose Umanios.
Hi. Half a day, can you hear me okay? Because I know some of the sound wasn't coming in so good.
Yeah, it looks good.
My half a day, Senator Perez, Honorable Senator Perez, Senator Joanne Brown, and your Honorable Senator Telo Taitegui. This is actually the first time I've ever testified at legislature, so bear with me. So my name is Vincent M. Umanios, and I am testifying in support of the executive appointment of Jose Umanios to serve as the member of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board. I've known Jose, or you know, we call him Joey, for over 50 years. He's a family member, he's my brother, having grown up and ranched and farmed, we really call it ranching, but in Northern Guatemala, all of his life and given his deep commitment to preserving and protecting our cultural resources, island environment and ocean, and ensuring the healthy and safety of Guam's people. I strongly feel that Jose possesses the values, knowledge, experience and qualifications to serve as a member of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board. You know, as a father with strong, very, strong family values, and as a longtime educator and department chair in the Social Sciences at Guam Community College, teaching students younger and older, he will always advocate for an advanced outreach efforts to raise awareness about the critical need to preserve and protect our valuable island and cultural resources. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide my testimony in full support of Jose Umanios's appointment to the district board. Thank you, and seduzmasi.
Seduzmasi Vince for your testimony or participation today. I also like to recognize Roland Kitiwa, who most people know, is associated with the coconut rhinoceros beetle, you know, biosecurity, but he's here in his capacity as an advisor of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District. So thank you for being here, Roland. Would you like to provide any testimony at this time?
I don't think it's necessary. I do like the idea of getting more people on the board so that we can do more work because there is a lot of work on the plate of this board that needs to be done. So if these guys are willing to step forward and get their feet on the ground, then I'm all in the support of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Roland. Okay, so we don't have anybody else to testify, I believe. Is there anybody else before I move on to the nominees themselves? Please, if you can turn on your video so we know that you're here to testify. Okay, so we'll move on. So I'd like to now recognize Jose Antulama Manios for his testimony.
Half a day seduzmasi, nam kambiro, paga para esti positioni, in Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board. I am a resident of Northern Guam. I am a certified bona fide farmer with Department of Agriculture. I had known about the workings of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board, and really, years ago, did not know or have any intention of applying, you know, seeking nomination to the board. I was approached by the Department of Agriculture, specifically an individual who helps farmers, and he said to me, hey Joe, you know, the board needs people, and I think you'd make a great candidate. And so Pedro Lahey asked me if I'd be interested, and I did some research, and I said, you know what, let me, let me check this out. And so I communicated with Pope Cristobal, who I'm very proud to say, yeah, she's a resource for me and my instruction at Guam Community College. And after several, many conversations with Hope, I thought that I would be a good fit. I think the board has a very important mandate. Conservation being a steward for the environment, protecting our resources, water, soil, and also being able to help the farmers is very current. It's a very current theme, especially in light of COVID and the whole notion of food sovereignty. So I look forward to the opportunity. I hope that I am approved. I think I would be a good fit, and I do look forward to working with the board. And I want to thank you very much for the opportunity, Senator Perez, Honorable Senator Brown, and Honorable Senator Taitegui. Thank you so much for attending, and I appreciate the opportunity should I be given it. Seduzmasi.
Seduzmasi Jose. So I believe those that are here to provide testimony are providing testimony for both nominees, is that correct? So Hope, Nancy Hope, and also Katrina Rages, okay. So then, in that case, I would like to then offer the floor to Rosalinas Siniklas for her to provide testimony.
Half a day, and thank you so much for this incredible opportunity. As a horse rancher for the last 20 years, as an educator of 30 years, I feel I can bring to the board, excuse me, there we go, as a horse rancher of 20 years, and as an educator of over 30 years, I feel I can bring to the board critical thinking skills and the ability to engage in constructive, conflictive dialogue, with the ability to keep an emotional distance and assess things objectively. Sticking to the mandates, I'm, it's personal to me regarding soil conservation. I have a ranch, which I made some critical errors with as a farmer. I clear-cut it, scraped my entire lot. I knocked down fruit trees, I knocked down many beautiful, beautiful fruit trees, many beautiful ornamental trees, and I significantly scraped my soil, to where now when I'm transitioning from horse ranching to agriculture, I have no soil. I have to build back my soil organically. So realizing the mistakes I'd made, I realized I needed to get more involved and participate in soil conservation. I, through my naivety and experience, did not know how to manage my ranch effectively. I see participation on this board as an opportunity to engage with like-minded people, engage and provide some kind of support to farmers out there, as well as conservation for our land. It's personal, it's spiritual, and it's professional with this participation in the board. Personal in that I grew up with a deep love of our land. It breaks my heart to see what has happened up with the military buildup. It breaks my heart to see the scraping of the land. Spiritually, I feel a deep connection to our land. I honor the traditions my grandfather has taught me to respect and honor our land and to always promote it to the youth, promote agriculture to our youth. The opportunity on this board would be incredible. I have the energy and the professional commitment to participate in the board, and I do have the ability to handle conflict. I'm glad that that issue was brought forward immediately, that there were some issues that the board dealt with in terms of internal conflicts. I'm a team player. At the same time, I'm able to negotiate conflict constructively. That being said, I will leave that there. I don't want to take up any more time of the board. I know it's pre-Thanksgiving, everybody's got personal family obligations to do, so thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to working with this team if selected. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rosalina, for your testimony. And so now we'll move on to the question portion. Before I start, I want to just give anybody else a chance to provide any testimony at this time. Okay, so we'll then move on to the questions. So we'll begin with Jose. So it's, I think it's great that you have experience as a bona fide farmer, and so I think that firsthand experience can provide some sort of insight as a board member, and of course, that's one of the criteria too, is you have to be either a farmer or a land occupier according to the law, but I believe being a farmer is very critical. So can you just tell us a little bit about your experience as a farmer and what you see as your role in the board? What are the challenges you see out there, and how can you promote conservation amongst the board?
You know, I was, you know, farming and ranching, you know, growing things for consumption and, you know, within the family, and the extended family was always something we did. And what I've found most recently is looking for crops that will be successfully grown here where we don't have to alter the soil or rely on pesticides or chemicals, but things that are going to be more endemic or more, can be more successfully grown in our particular climate and soil conditions. And using Department of Agriculture, I found some things that are very advantageous and grow very well here. And I think using some of those crops and infusing them into our local diet could mitigate some of the needs for pesticides and the poisons that we put on plants. I think that when it comes to conservation, we live on an island, and islands, no matter where you go, have limited resources, so we have to be great protectors of that. It's just, it's finite. We don't have all the space, all the resources to do all of the things that we might want to do, so we have to be caretakers. And I think with the issue of climate change and the notion that, you know, we need to be a little bit more conscious of moving to a more, at least a greater participation of our farmers in our local markets, and making a dent in the import of food is very, very important. COVID has just, you know, made it so much more important, and I'm fortunate, I'm, you know, living and being born in the 60s, we ate a lot of stuff that we just had, that's just what we had, and it's, we've made a 180-degree turn. And so I think we need to kind of turn back and figure out strategies to help the farmers not just grow successfully, but be able to market it successfully, so that way we're building from within. And that may take a while, but I believe it's possible. We need to move in that direction for the sustainability of our island. Yeah. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you, that's a great vision. Yeah, thank you for that. So I know you are the chair, right? You are the chair for one of the departments in Guam Community College?
Yes, I oversee the Criminal Justice and Social Sciences Department. I'm the department chair for, yeah, that department. It's my job, that's my job. So when I was invited to, hey, would you be interested in this? I told Hope, I said, you know, I got a full-time job, I work at GCC, and I'm very lucky and very happy, you know, that I have this opportunity, but I do also like my job, I love my job. And she said, oh, it's okay, you'd be able to do this, it's, you know, it's a volunteer thing. And I said, okay, we'll see, we'll see. But yes, I oversee the Criminal Justice and Social Sciences Department, and so in some of the offerings of our department, we talk about this whole notion of, you know, sustain, the themes of sustainability and food sovereignty and equality, and they're all related to, you know, how do you sustain a place? How do you sustain a people? So, yeah, even in my full-time job, we do this. So, yeah, I guess, you know, I'm living it through my personal habits, but I'm also living it through my professional work. And I look at this as kind of, and somebody mentioned, this is community service, so it's a good thing, yeah.
So as a chair, you probably have a lot of expertise, especially with GCC. Do you deal with, you know, a lot of like, I guess, conflict resolution, or what kind of skills can you bring to the board as a chair?
Oh, you know, that's all, you know, conflict resolution, you know, communication, being able to look at things rationally and stay focused on moving forward. Those are things that, you know, you learn and you understand as being important, and I've been at GCC since 1990, so I've been there longer than my students have been alive, most of them. And so those skills of compromise, cooperation, and being willing to see and being open to new ideas, you know, you're not going to survive. You have to learn, you know, the whole notion of being a lifelong learner means also too that not only are you going to be willing to learn things, but you're also going to be willing to share things, and you're going to be willing to be open. And today's world, we can't, we can't rely on just what I know. I have to rely on lots of other people to help, and so I look at the situation with the current board, and they haven't been able to have a quorum, there's been some other issues. I think when, you know, I heard Hope say this, and I heard Roland say this, that, you know, it might be a good idea to revisit and perhaps expand the board, I think that's, for me, I think that's a good idea. You know, the more people that are involved that are going to be committed, but the commitment has to be legitimate, has to be real. And so it can't be, I'm doing this just to do it, you know, there's work to be done. There's too many things going on on the island that affects our environment that we can just say, oh, no, no, well, don't worry, we'll fix it later. No, we can't fix it later, we have to start fixing, at least looking at things as soon as possible, immediately, if you will. Open pit burning.
Yes.
The open pit burning, yeah, it's a good one, can't do that, yeah.
Well, thank, yeah.
So, yeah, I think I have the skills to help with, if the board needs to be more cooperative, rational, transformative even, I think I have the skills to assist with that. Think I can.
And then as a board member, you, I guess you are upholding the laws, so that's one of the things, is making sure that you have an impartial, you will carry out the laws impartially.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
To do that.
Oh, yes, 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 yeah. My father, you know, Vincent says, but my father was a career law enforcement officer, which is what, you know, I mean, yeah, he didn't ask us to be cops, but he was a cop his whole career, first to more to have a bachelor's degree in police science, so, you know, it's following the law is kind of, you know, that's what we did, and so that's not a problem. I think ethically and morally, there are parallels, and so we have to look at, as again, as this board looks at what is appropriate, we will be giving persons like you advice because that's what we're supposed to do. And this is the path that may be the most appropriate, and so laws may need to be changed, laws may need to be altered, but that doesn't mean we just break them, no. Yeah.
Well, thank you, I do appreciate all. Well, thank you. I, I do appreciate all your responses and you're checking all the marks for me as far as, you know, security, you know, professionalism, yeah, impartiality, sense of, you know, what Guam needs to do to protect our resources. So I do appreciate you taking the time to be on this or accepting the nomination, first of all.
You're welcome. No, no, that's, yeah, I was, I was honored that they asked. And when Hope talked to me and she goes, you know, you'd be really good at this. You could do this. After the, the third, second, third conversation, I said, oh, thank you. You know, we talked for a while. She goes, no, I think you'd be really good for this. And I thought, oh, okay. Peter Law, he said the same thing, Eric Coach, because no, Joe, you would be good at this. You could be good for this. And let's face it, I teach at, I teach at the college. And let me tell you, I go to lots of meetings. So I know what that's all about. Yeah.
Thank you.
Get moving, moving along. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
Service and accepting this nomination.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, I'll go ahead and maybe ask, we'll ask questions of you first and then we'll move on to Rosalina. So I would like to now invite Senator Brown, if she has any questions or comments for the nominee, Jose Manios.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And certainly thank you to Mr. Manios who's for stepping up to the plate with his appointment to serve on the Soil and Water Conservation Board for Northern Guam. I just wanted to ask him to what degree of familiarity, I did hear his responses to the other questions with, with the actual mission of the conservation districts. You know, to what degree have you familiarized yourself? Because I, I'm just a little surprised at the lack of quorum. I mean, I, I have the opportunity for four years at UOG to work with the Soil and Water Conservation District Boards. And during that time, we really had consistency for both the northern and southern district with participation of the members. So I'm just a little surprised to hear, and I don't know the circumstances, you know, people get busy with other things and other obligations, but you know, kind of curious as to why there's no consistency with regards to quorum. And, you know, my first question, you might not be able to answer that, but my, my first question is just, what's your degree of familiarity with the mission of the conservation districts?
Well, the, 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 the mission, I, I, I read the, the GCA and you know, I understand that it's designed to oversee local, you know, work with government, Guam entities, UOG, to oversee federal programs established. And I'll just read it, established to promote the conservation development and the use of soil and water resources of Guam in order to control and prevent soil erosion and flooding and to improve agricultural water management. So that, that's what it says. And so I'm like, oh, I, I, I know what that means. Yeah, I can, I understand. You're, you're again stewardship for the environment and, and being cognizant of, you know, conservation and the development of agriculture on Guam and, and the use of the, our resources appropriately. I can read that. And so I understand it. And in my conversations with Hope, you know, she said, yeah, that's what we do. We work with USDA and the board works with the other entities to ensure that, that we are protecting and being stewards of the environment. Now, your comment about why the board wasn't meeting and why there wasn't a quorum, I don't know that. I'm not really privy to that because I wasn't involved in the board prior. But I do understand that myself and, and Rosalina's nomination is designed to make the board whole and improve, get its membership to five, to make it complete and, and allow it to have a greater opportunity to meet quorum and move the agenda along. That's my understanding.
Right. Now, I, I don't expect that to be your burden with regards to, you know, the previous, why, why it has not had a quorum. It's just a bit curious as to why the district has had an issue with quorum. Cause like I said, that it's been a few years, but that's not been my, my experience. Normally, most of the members have been pretty, pretty active and engaged. So I, I guess it's just something to note. And also I hope that in the course of your, your time, if you're confirmed, it, it's really expanding that greater awareness. I mean, for you yourself in, in your history in being a farmer, has this, have you ever been engaged or involved with any type of conservation programs? Or did you hear about it? And if, if so, how? And if not, is that something you would look forward to being on the board to? You know, as part of the mission, which really is, is to get that level of engagement among our farming community to partners with conservation.
I, 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 I I would say, yes, I, I look forward to the opportunity to look at ways to, to, to increase the capacity that farmers have to use conservation techniques, you know? And again, newer conservation techniques. And again, if, if other older techniques work well, then we need to, to highlight that. But when I think of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board, and I think of the Southern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board, I can only recall seeing signs, asking people to make a comment on particular developments. And I remember what, seeing a sign by, in, in Baragada by Cool Spot. And it was up for a long time. And I, and I first saw it and I said, what is that? NGSW? What, what is that? And I stopped to look at it. And I said, oh, and this was fifteen years ago, maybe eighteen years ago. And I thought, oh, that's a good idea that they have that kind of board. But did I know it existed twenty years ago? No. Yeah, no, I did not know. And even in my work as, as being a farmer, the technique, the, you know, the, you know, you, to, to do things, to, to use the resources that are available for us, that are just readily available. I use bedliners. I recycle bedliners from the junkyard to create planters. And so, you know, reduce, reuse and recycle. That's, that's, you know, every, oh yeah, reduce, reuse and recycle. Really, it's reduce and reuse. Because we can't recycle because we don't. We, 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 that's, that's not for us. So we got to figure out a way to reduce what we need. But at the same time, reuse what we need. And, you know, nobody told me that, but I think there would probably be a lot of other farmers that would be able to benefit. I don't really want everybody to do it because then I'm going to run out of the opportunity to get free bedliners. But they make great pots. They make great planters, you know? And so I think that when we think about what the board does, it may have been, and you'll know better than I, it seems like earlier they were much more active and much more involved. But I think for this particular board, the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District Board, I think this board may have been bogged down with some other issues because it was like, wow, why would you need members? This is important. You would think farmers be willing to do this. This is something, hey, I'm going to learn. I'm going to be able to, you know, inform my other farmers and share this information. But being a farmer, I'd never heard anything. So I hope, I hope, you know, I'd, I'd like to try to make a difference. We'll see.
Well, I, I'm just bringing it up because, you know, if you've not been, you know, aside from what you mentioned, noticing these signs, and you've not had that direct engagement, perhaps that's something on the board that you can look at because there's tremendous opportunities. And of course, conservation is not just limited to farmers. But, but certainly because farmers, in most cases, they have direct involvement with the land, more the opportunity. And then other federal organizations like Natural Resource Conservation Service, they also have a lot of grants and other federal programs that the more engaged we are with our federal partners with these grants, the more financial resources can come into our community to address the very issues that we're talking about. And at the same time, it provides sustainability and justification for our federal partners to be here. So I, I hope that's something that you will look into and expand so that we can, we can really get, because to me, it's a very wonderful concept. Sometimes the personalities get in the way of getting things done because the politics exist at all levels. Sometimes get in the way of, of really doing the mission of the district, which, which to me is a really good. I, I think it, there's a lot of positives with that, that we as a community, whether you're a farmer or not, can, can gain benefits from. So good luck to you. I hope we hear positive activity happening with the northern district and we return to some regularity of having the district meet because it's, it's just unfortunate if there's been a void. You know that it means the mission is not moving forward. And certainly to hear from Senator Hope that the employee that was hired, you know, eventually just ended up leaving because of, you know, administrative frustrations. I mean, that, those things are unnecessary. And hopefully we shouldn't, you know, have to deal with that at all. So good luck to you, Mr. Manios. And again, thank you for stepping up and thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to be able to ask Mr. Manios questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown, for those questions and comments. I'd like to now invite Senator Tadegui for any kind of questions and comments as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I first want to thank, you know, Senator Hope Prestovil for going out there and aggressively recruiting individuals to, to go, to be on this board. And I, I think she chose two great people. I, I know Joey firsthand because our families are very connected by, I, I, I'm more of Vince's age and then my sister Nita with Karina, we, we go back many years. And I know you personally, I know that when you put your mind to something, Joey, you, you'll get it done. You know, yeah, it's, it's in your nature to not, to do something just halfway through. And so I, I'm confident that sitting on this board, you're going to get a lot done. It meets once a month from what I gather. So I think you can take a little bit of time out of your, your schedule there. But, you know, doing, do, you know, working at GCC and then also farming or ranching is, that's a lot of work.
A lot of work.
I just wanted to thank you so much, you know, to, to weed out some time for this because it's definitely needed. My colleagues have answered all the questions, you know, and, and heard from you. And you gave great answers too, by the way, Joey, really good. But I had no doubt in you.
Thank you, Senator Tello. Thank you so much.
Very welcome, Joey. And Hope, don't, you know, keep, keep recruiting them, especially if you bring two like this. Or a lot of good things are going to happen in, in this board, a lot of good things. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Senator Tadegui. So now we are going to switch over to questions for the nominee, Rosalina Siniklis, as a member of the Northern Soil and Water Conservation District Board. So, so Rosalina, so you've been an educator for thirty years and a horse rancher for twenty years. So what, what do you bring to the board? You know, what kind of expertise do you bring to the board with that background?
In terms of participants with NRCS, I'm a, I was a participant with NRCS. That's how I got my feet wet with conservation and with the practices that they are promoting us to do on the ranch. With, with grant writing and with their support, I was able to fence in my entire tenure lot and start a small business. Now, in terms of all that experience on building up a business and having all the struggles, I have firsthand on boots, on the ground, experienced as a rancher trying to make a living off agriculture. It is difficult. So I know the struggle is real for, for the farmers. Everything from technical expertise as well as equipment, personnel, energy some days, hands-on, boots on the ground, hands-on experience farming, boots, hands-on the ground experience, working with NRCS as a, as a participant. And then also the training I, I've had with Ina Fama like as a conflict mediator. And also as a participant with farm to table, all of these, all of this background training I bring to the table under the umbrella of ranching or farming.
Great. Well.
What's on the ground experience?
Yeah, no, that's.
Sweat equity, baby, sweat equity.
Sounds great. High qualifications. Great. Yeah. So, yeah, you're, you'll be filling the, the unexpired term of, let's see, of Joe Santis, which Joseph Santis, which ends in August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. So you'll just have maybe a couple of months on the board as well as Jose. But hopefully, yeah, things work out. We, you know, be back here for, you know, renomination. But of course, we're jumping the gun on that one. Okay. So yeah, so I know Soil and Water Conservation District, they had these educator symposiums too, I believe for seven years. So I think, eight years. Okay. Thank you. I stand corrected. Yeah. So I think that's great to have an educator, or both educators on the board that can potentially assist with that, that type of symposium should the board decide to do that. Yeah. Do you, do you think this is an initiative that's worth continuing?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You have to engage the youth. If you don't engage the youth, this, we're not doing this for ourselves. We are doing this for the future. So the legacy we put forth now is to leave behind for the generations, which we will not even see or meet, a really clean, sustainable environment for them to be able to live their lives forward. And, you know, Joey was talking about sustainability. And of course, COVID brought to light how much we're so dependent on outside imports. Of course, I'd like to see our farming community thrive to where we can feed ourselves, at least with basic staples. So we're not so dependent upon all these imports.
Thank you. Thank you. And, you know, in our, in our conversation previously, you mentioned that you looked at the Enabling Statute, right? Five GCA, chapter seventy-one. So, yeah, what is, I guess, you know, what is, what do you see as your role and what do you see as your vision as a board member?
Role? Participating board member under the direction, of course. I expect to bring to the table an objectivity and experience. And as a team member, of course, I will always defer to our director and make sure that I stay in line and in step united. Divisions in-house fighting destroys boards, backbiting, backstabbing. I do not engage in that type of behavior. I do not. I keep things professional and I never contribute to a negative narrative. There's no value in that. So I come in new. So as a new person, I'm bringing a level of objectivity. No emotionalism. Straight, let's go to the policy. Let's go to the mandate. Do we stick to the mandate? Are our decisions aligned with the mandate? Always going back to the mandate, always going back to the law. Keep emotion out of it. I understand how boards can be very emotional as individuals feel they lose face personality issues. My role will be to stay neutral to stay calm. Do not personalize anything, but more so keep that distance and make sure we always come back to the mandate, always come back to the directives. And no in-house fighting as much as possible. Constructive conflict is good, but to the point of where a woman has to resign over an issue of payroll, again, as Senator Brown was mentioning, unacceptable. You know, how can you do that to someone? That's someone's livelihood to withhold a signature. That's personal. Sorry. Moving forward. Move forward. To be an effective board member, to be a team board member and to keep the interest of the farmers and the land and the ocean and environment at our center, not our personal profit, not personal motivation, but truly to keep the interest of our future in mind. We're doing this not for ourselves, but for the future. So that's what I see my role.
All right. And in cases where maybe you don't have the answers, what are the ways at which you obtain those?
That is through constructive dialogue and researching and searching out those who have maybe the expertise. That's within the, within, within the mandate. It talks about the collaboration among UOG and other agencies, not being afraid to reach out to our experts and receive the information from the experts, those more qualified than I, hear their input. And then move forward from an informed, informed place. Give me the data. We'll review the data. From the data, it'll derive the decision.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for your responses. And I do look forward to, you know, your confirmation. Yeah. And collaboration, I think, you know, moving forward with all the board members. So, and you, you, you bring a lot of you know, background and expertise, I think, to this board. And I do look forward to, to voting in this session. All right. So thanks. All right. So thank you so much. And I'd like to now open the floor to Senator Brown for any comments or questions for the nominee.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I certainly appreciate the comments that, uh, Mrs. Siniklis has provided to us with regards to confirmation. Uh, but I also want to ask the question, uh, how do you see your role in the board as perhaps expanding? Because it's you know, we don't hear as much either about the conference or nation districts overall in the community. Um, is that something you would be interested in doing? And if so, how, how would you be able to s- expand the information and message and outreach of the board to the community? Because as I mentioned, you know, yes, conservation's an important component with regards to agriculture and soil quality, but there are many other areas that the, you know, the fundamental values of conservation can be expanded and greater awareness definitely can be put out there in our community. So I just wanted to ask, how would you like to see that as, as a board member? And how do you think you could be a part of contributing to that, if you see that as something that could be a priority for the Northern District Board?
As an educator, um, of course, my focus is youth, to activate the youth voice. Now, let me just give you my experience in researching the board. When I go online to research the information about the board, I get one Facebook page. I get very limited information about, uh, the activities. I did a whole Google search on, on the organization. And if you want to ignite, activate the youth voice, you have to ignite and activate the youth medium of communication, which is there, all of the social media components that are out there and upgrade the digital footprint of the organization itself. You're not going to get the youth unless you speak the youth's language uh, or use their medium of communication. So, um, I really see a need, uh, for the board to also, of course, the whole conservation issue, yes, but messaging, the messaging out there has to become, uh, there has to be more of a digital footprint. I should be able to go on there and hit a site, just like where the Maui's Conservation Board, you know, it's an excellent, there's you know, when you look at everybody else's websites, uh, the material is there for any public person that wants to review. I just feel we need a bigger digital footprint. And how do I, uh, see my role in that? Um, I got tech skills. I got tech skills. Uh, and I'm I can contribute to help towards that. But that's one of the biggest things I see that, um, in my journey trying to learn about the activities of the board, of course, I did my digital search and I was like, oh, there's room for improvement there. Messaging, messaging. Apologies, that's a school. One moment. Apologies. So, in terms of my role, I'd like to activate more of the youth voice and, um, hit them at their level in terms of the media, social media and the digital footprint.
That's why. I appreciate your response. I mean, certainly even at a national level, I mean, the Soil and Water Conservation District certainly are very much engaged in, in the community and the outreach. And, and you can look up, as you mentioned, other jurisdictions in the U.S. mainland, and, and they, they have a very good footprint. I think we collectively would like to see the same thing here for Guam. And, and that's also something I'm sure that once you acquire another staff to come back onboard and assist the district, hopefully, they can also, uh, help facilitate that process as well. So I do wish you well. I mean, I, I, I think we all see the benefits. It's one of those organizations where there's just plus, plus and pluses. And if you can rein in the personality conflicts, uh, I think you can otherwise be very productive. And I appreciate your interest in serving, uh, on the board. I do want to ask Madam Chair, and I know it's not directly related to the appointments, uh, to the Conservation District Board, but I also just wanted to relay that certainly for the administration, if they you know, made pronouncements of how important agriculture is. Do we know if, uh, there have been appointments also made to the Agriculture Board of Commissioners? Do we know if that has happened, or if other farmers have heard of that board?
I have not heard anything, uh, to that. Is this question directed to any of the, anybody else on the panel?
If, if, just if anyone has any information on it, because I, I'm just a little curious. I haven't heard much about it. I just wanted to inquire if there, if there is such, because I, I'm sure the district would would, would also, I'm sure, benefit from engagement with, uh, a board similar, just because of the agricultural component, but um, are we aware at all? Is anyone aware at all if there is an, uh, appointments to an agricultural commissioner board with Department of Agriculture? No? One question I do want to ask, I don't know if Roland is still on, I just wanted to, to inquire with regards to the district, uh, its role or engagement with the university versus Department of Agriculture, is that still, um, to the degree the university was actively involved? I don't, I don't see if he's still on. Or does maybe Hope, Senator Hope can relay? Uh, does the university still provide the framework of support for the, uh, district, or is it more so now the Department of Agriculture? To provide, you know, your, your structural assistance, or conference room and things of that nature to help facilitate your, your agenda?
Yes, Senator, um, the same, when you were with, uh, uh, the board, we get an advisor that's assigned by, uh, Dean Udine. And for the North Board, we have Roland assigned. And of course, uh, Roland hasn't been too aggressive with us, because I think he understands our situation. Uh, but we do have a lot of reports turned in to him. Uh, but he hasn't really rung my ear, you know, get this done, get that done. Uh, we do have, uh, a triennial election coming up in August.
Right, normally August.
By January, we, he keeps telling me, you gotta get your farmer's registry going. And we had one person doing that, but as it turned out, um, it, it didn't materialize. And I asked her to please at least, uh, make a hard copy for me, but, uh, the, the, um, I guess she just didn't have the capacity to understand exactly what, uh, we needed. So that's another area, Senator, uh, Joanne. I know you're very familiar with the work of these boards. And, uh, I know you're a real advocate for our environment. And I know this is the kind of stuff that really, uh, uh, you know, gets you going. Uh, like I said, uh, since twenty-five years ago, as a first senator, uh, that's one of the first things that, uh, you have expressed. Uh, and I know it's still in your blood. So, uh, yes, uh, we really would appreciate your continual advocacy for our work and, uh, for the work, uh, that we are not yet doing. And hopefully with good staff and, um, this year for FY twenty-two, uh, our good oversight chair was able to, uh, justify an increase of close to thirty-five thousand dollars for each board and tried to restore our original budget through the help of Erica Penglinen, who was very quick to, um, respond to me. She's the staffer, Southern Guam. And so, um, I know Senator, uh, Perez needed that while she was on the floor. We were ready to act. And, um, and we do have a lot of information at our fingertips. Uh, but yes, you know, uh, we have one board member that wanted to establish all these platforms in Instagram, but it, it's a lot of words. But to get that act really done is, is another, um, uh, situation, Senator. So we just appreciate that extra funding for now. We do have a combined website uh, that we have, uh, put in twenty-five hundred dollars as, as, uh, Southern Guam has. And we have a webmaster who's setting it up right now. So, uh, we are going to be doing our budget allocation soon as we get, uh, all these good people on board and really look at our budget. And, um, gosh, if you have any good, other good suggestions, uh, Senator Tello and Senator Perez, let us know. But yes, we are in touch with the NACD, Senator. I I remember seeing you at those meetings. And they have, uh, Erica keeps telling me, we need to do the Envirathon. Uh, we're not ready.
That's right. We've not, yeah, I don't think you've
Never done that.
Especially for our young people.
That's exactly right. And I think, uh, Lena would be perfect for that. And so I'm looking forward to her uh, learning more about it. And it's great, um, prices there. They get, they get to present this across the, the nation, you know, uh, their ideas for, uh, conservation. So I'm looking forward to that, and I'm trying to instill that. And, but I just wanted to share this very good news, because for the first time, uh, the educator symposium has a tomorrow component. And there was a whole bunch of tomorrow teachers that came under the, uh, supervision of Anne Marie Arceo. And, uh, they were there and, and took, uh, our curricular materials and localized them. So they're using it in the, um, immersion program at the G D O E. And so that was the highlight this year. Uh, although, um, you know, it does take a lot of work. So having educators on board, I think, helps to, uh, you know, better the understanding of the work, uh, that needs to be done. But, um, Senator Perez and yourself, Senator Brown and you, Senator Tello, man, you are like, like, uh, just constantly seeing you on TV. So keep up the good work, you three ladies. And, um, yeah, we were going, we may be coming to you, but I think this year we are set with our budget and we can add, uh, of our program. So one of the first things, like I said, uh, is, uh, and we had planned on this, uh, Lena, uh, to, um, you know, uh, improve our, our website, which is a combined website between Southern Guam and Northern Guam. So we do collaborate on many issues and, um, um, gosh, I'm, I'm really excited. I hope Southern Guam would get an opportunity to share the good news of the work of both boards. Uh, Erica Penglinen and I burned the midnight oil to write the grant for the, um, Guam Long Range Plan. And of course, um, at that time, by the way, now the USDA is getting rid of, um, the numbering system and the SAM numbers. They're using, uh, other numbers. So at the time we wrote that proposal, uh, the year before, uh, we needed to have a DANCE and a SAM number. And our northern board did not have those numbers. Uh, but Southern Guam consistently kept the numbers alive. And we placed the proposal under the Southern Guam. Uh, so, but it's a collaborative project. And again, Senator Brown, I know you're familiar with NACD. They were able to provide us a hundred thousand dollars to prepare a strategic plan, which is, uh, another excellent, and, and Dr. Bob uh, is helping with putting that out together. So
Well, I know how energetic and passionate Dr. Barber is. So there's a plus all around there. Yeah. Yeah, that's wonderful. Well, we look forward, certainly, Senator Hope, to the continued work. And now that you, hopefully, you're gonna have a quorum with your new board members. We certainly look forward to hearing, hearing all your ongoing and new projects. I, I'm sure your initiative in trying to recruit other members, uh, is your main focus on getting things back on track. And hopefully, uh, maybe next year, before the next budget cycle, it'd be good to have a, you know, with our chair here, uh, just to maybe an update presentation to the legislature. Certainly, we're able to do it where we can televise it, so the community can hear. You know, just update on your projects and programs, uh, before the budget cycle comes around, so that people have a greater awareness. Because like I said, I think, I think the work of the district is all a benefit. It's all a plus. I don't see the minus at all in the mission that you guys are undertaking at a local. And certainly, I'm very happy to hear, gosh, for NACD to provide a hundred thousand dollar
Oh, yeah.
Grant to, to the, the Guam district is very, very impressive. That, 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 uh, that says a lot. So I look forward to your continued success. And again, Madam Chair and Senator Hope and everyone here. Thank you for the opportunity to ask questions and comment. And happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, you too, all of you. Sido Smase.
Happy Thanksgiving, yes.
This is Massey, Senator Brown, Senator Tello Taticwi. Uh, if you have any questions for, uh, the nominee, Rosalina Siniklis.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, I, I, I'm just really thrilled, the fact that, uh, Senator Brown is with us now in this thirty-six Guam Legislature. And to have that, uh, backing that Sabina, my, uh, Senator Perez, myself, and and I know Speaker Chilaki has wanted to, uh, you know, uh, help and improve the Guam's, uh, solid, uh, you know, with the, uh, conservation, the soil conservation and water conservation. And, and with Senator Brown here, it's, it's gonna be a lot of help. Senator Christovle, so we're gonna get that, uh, extra push that we needed for so long. But I want to thank you, Rosalina, for, too, for, um, taking on this, uh, position and stepping up to the plate. You know, you're my kind of girl. Whenever you get into something, first thing you do is you want to find out if there's access. You know, easy access. And because that's, you're right, um, being able to reach out to the public and have the public to be able to find that information, you're, you're only as smart as the information that you have. You know, and if you can't get that information out there, uh, for the people to understand or educate them on what needs to be done, or how to help them, you know, uh, as well as their neighbors when it comes to this, um, then, uh, it, it, it doesn't do any good if you can't have that, uh, communication for us to be able to reach out to. So, yeah, you're like me. I, I did the same thing. You know, I Googled it myself, just to see how, how much is up there. And you're right, you know, it was just Facebook. You know, so this is a great opportunity, uh, to have you on board, because with your techie, um, experience, you know, and, and, and the reach out to the youth, um, that, that was well said about how you're able to get the youth involved, you know, to speak their language. That was very good. Well said. I wish you the best, uh, Rosalina, and I thank you again, and everyone. Jo- Joey, uh, always a pleasure to see you. Thank you so much again as well. Hope.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Katrina, uh, I see you at the farmer's market. I was there actually this afternoon, getting some cucumbers right there at the farmer's market. I, I'm sorry, I missed you. I didn't get to see you there when I went there this afternoon. But, um, happy Thanksgiving to you. Everybody be safe. Thank you.
All right, Sido Smase, Senator Taticwi. Um, so, uh, being that there are no other testimonies, uh, or questions for the nominees, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank you, Jose and, uh, Rosalina for accepting the nomination and, uh, for answering our questions here today. I want to thank, uh, board members, Katrina Rages, as well as Hope Christovle for their, for their presence and testimony as well. And I want to thank my colleagues, um, for their, for, for being here and participating, as well as, um, uh, Vince and, uh, Roland Kedigua, too, uh, for their presence. So, uh, being that, um, there are no other testimonies. We are still receiving testimonies until December first, Wednesday. Um, so we, we are still accepting testimonies. Uh, but, uh, we do appreciate if you can send them sooner than that. Uh, we would like to include this on the session agenda. So, um, um, being that there's no other testimonies, I want to now adjourn this meeting. It is now three oh eight P M. And, uh, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you very much, Sido Smase.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
We're so blessed. We're so blessed. Thank you.